Study session on September 22nd, 2025, 6:00 PM, City Council Chambers, 111 East Maples, City Manager, and the first item is Nolan Fashion Square, which I know there are tons of people in this building who are excited about the possibility of even having a discussion about Nolan Fashion Square, and I truly know I am excited about it. I know a lot of people on this diet are excited about it. So, we're delighted to have that discussion, and so, I hope I have not taken the thunder away from you, sir, but I think it's an important discussion, and please proceed.
No, sir. Plenty of thunder to go around with a project like this, so no worries at all. Tonight, we are excited to introduce you to the development team from Tri-Land. Richard Doobie and some of his partners are here this evening to share with you a proposal that they've been working on for several months now to bring new life, much-needed new life, to the Nolan Fashion Square, which, for those that aren't familiar, located at the corner of Nolan Road and 40 Highway in Independence. This is the same team that redeveloped the Hub Shopping Center at 23rd and 291 a few years ago. So, for those of you that are familiar with the transformative work there, this is that same project team. So, a lot to get to, and so, Mayor, without further ado, I think I will ask Richard and his team to come up and begin their overview.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
Thank you. I just want to make a statement that I will be recusing myself for this project for the sole purpose that I do work for the Balls family, the Balls Food Stores. I've been with them for 26 years. We own all the Hen House Grocery Stores and about another 18, 19 Price Choppers, although this company, the company that I work for is not associated whatsoever with this development and/or this family. The logo and the branding of Price Chopper, I do work under that banner, so I will not be voting on this. I will stay and listen, because this is such an important topic for the development of our town, that I will listen, but I will not ask any questions, and I will, you know, will not vote on this. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Excellent. Mr. Doobie, please proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you, and nice to be here tonight. I appreciate it. Many of you know me. My name is Richard Doobie. I'm the president of Tri-Land Properties, and I'm here tonight with Dave Francé and from Stinson, who has represented Tri-Land for the last 20 years here in Kansas City, and John Hanson from IRR, who equally has represented Tri-Land on various developments here. So, the topic is Nolan Fashion Square, and a little bit about the agenda tonight, who I am, John and Dave, Tri-Land's background, Nolan Fashion Square today, a very brief 70-second video, just to place into perspective the condition of the property, what the benefits are, and a repositioning statement, and a financial overview, that when I'm done with the presentation, John Hanson's going to come up and talk about Nolan by the numbers. So, my company, 47 years old, located in Chicago, Illinois, employs about 25 people, privately held. I had a partner for 40 years. He decided to retire. I think I'm going to keep going as long as I can. We've completed 50 shopping centers primarily in the Midwest, representing about $670 million in investment, well, full-service business acquisitions, capital markets, management, leasing, construction, et cetera. We've completed five other deals here in Kansas City, two of them included Price Chopper. One of them was a Balls Price Chopper at 10 Quavera, which is on Mission Parkway and Quavera in Mission, in Shawnee Mission, Kansas, and the Blue Springs project that we did, we did with Hy-Vee over on Highway 7 and 40 in Missouri, and of course, we did the Hub here in Independence. I think this is really an important slide to this presentation. This represents the three stores that the McKeever's operate here in the city of Independence, two on 23rd Street, the furthest one to the west being at 23rd Street and Sterling, of course, the Hub, which we renovated in the last 15 to 18 months, and the existing store at Marketplace Center at Nolan and 70, which is, there's an arrow pointing to that one, and then the relocation that we're proposing of that particular store to Nolan and Highway 40, which is represented by a red dot on that map. The McKeever's who I just met with again last week have reiterated that that store at Nolan and 70 will close in February of 2028, and that's really, really the impetus for this whole project. When we were working with the McKeever's at the Hub, they actually asked that if I could get ahold of this property and control it, they would be the anchor tenant in the development. So, this has been in the works for about 18 months that we have worked towards this particular goal. So, Nolan Fashion Square today, many of you know it, but here's a slight video that puts it into perspective. There's no sound to this video. It's purely visual, and this was taken about four months ago, so it's pretty current in terms of what it represents. I think the good thing about looking at that video that we still see in the project, the bones of the project are good. What you see on the inside, it has to be gutted, there's no question about it, but when we're done gutting it, we're representing probably somewhere between $50 a square foot and $70 a square foot in savings versus if you tore it down and had to build a new building. So, there is efficiencies by keeping it, but it truly is just the bones and the structure. Thankfully, it is in good condition. So, here's our vision for the future. You'll see that it appears a little bit like the Hub. It's not an accident. Given today's construction costs, we feel confident that we know what the Hub costs. We know the materials that we use there to get the job done. Price Choppers, in cooperation with us, they like the design of that project and would like to see it again. So, we're basically looking at a similar visual presentation when this project is redeveloped. This is a site plan of the property, and what you're looking at in the blue squares are four out parcels that we do not control. It's not part of our acquisition of the property, and the other ones that, and so, that represents on the corner an Olive Garden, and represents a automobile repair store and an unimproved piece of land. Now, in the process of our discussions trying to get this property redeveloped, we are in discussions with all of these people to see if we can either acquire that or work with them to renovate the property as we renovate the rest of the project. Everything that you see in yellow are two new outlots that we're proposing in front of what was the old Gordmans Building west of Washington Street. So, we would add two new out parcels over there. We have a retailer that is interested in that 76,000-foot box, although those are very early conversations. We also have a potential interest from a party who is a non-retail entity in both of the buildings. Neither of those conversations are far along, but the retail piece is the one that we are pursuing at this point in time. There are primarily three access, or three pylon signs outlined in circles on the plan. One is on Nolan Road, and two are along Highway 40. Those are existing pylon signs that will be completely renovated to represent the new architecture of the property. And then along on Nolan Road, you'll see in yellow a traffic signal. We have done a traffic study. It's been presented here to the city of Independence. It's been presented to the state. There are no objections to putting in that traffic signal, and it would help the traffic on Nolan Road, not only from Nolan Fashion Square, but the Hy-Vee across the street. It would make a much more, a much safer intersection at Nolan in that intersection. And by the way, if anybody has any questions as I'm speaking, just interrupt me. I'm happy to take the questions. So, new building facades, replace the roofs, parking lots, organize the traffic flow, add new high-impact landscaping, renovate three existing pylon signs, add new outlot buildings, and add new high-intensity lighting for the parking lots so that it's safe at night. A little bit of comparison of Nolan to the Hub, which is kind of an interesting comparison here. Acres of land, 32 versus the Hub at 16. The size of Nolan Fashion Square is 280,000 feet versus 160,000 feet of building at the Hub, so almost twice as large. The main building, there was three of them at the Hub, there's two main buildings. The existing outlots are five that we control. There were two at the Hub. We proposed two new ones at Nolan Fashion Square. We proposed four that can be built at the Hub. The main building, and here's where the differences really lie, the main building is 100% occupied, a 1% vacant, excuse me, versus the Hub, which was only a 5% vacant building. So, it made the whole renovation of the Hub just easier, easier to finance, easier to implement. This one's a bit of a challenge, because you are literally starting with nothing, which is why the Price Chopper entity here is really important. The traffic that will come from that will drive the other tenants into the property. Owned outlot vacancies, it is now 65% of the five outlots that I showed you on the plan are now vacant. At the Hub, there were no vacancies at the time that we did it. So, no operating retail tenants, greater development risk. Attracting new tenants will take a little bit longer. Price Chopper will create the traffic we need to attract new tenants. The building condition, as we all saw, is extremely poor. The complete interior demolition is required, and we're significantly more expensive to renovate this than it was to renovate the Hub. Here's our timing as of our recent conversations with our team. So, in February of '26, we're proposing, if we can get the City Council to approve this, that the development agreements could be executed. All city of Independence approval secured. August of '26, we would sell the bonds. October of '26, we would commence construction, and we would anticipate opening the Price Chopper Store in April of 2027. So, while it's a rather aggressive timeframe, it's one that would assist us greatly if we could hit these goals. Just, it looks like the financing business or the financing environment has gotten a little bit, a little bit easier, as we've seen the recent rate reduction, and perhaps a few more of those along the way will help us on a timeframe. So, now, I'd like John Hanson to come up here and talk about Nolan by the numbers. So, we have a series of slides that we'll take you through that we've redone some of them to, we think, make it a little bit easier for everybody to understand where everything is going and where everything is coming from. So, with that, John Hanson?
Rich, thank you very much. Mayor, members of the council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We're excited to talk about this project and talk about the details surrounding it. As Rich mentioned, if any questions arise as we start to go through the presentation here, happy to field those as we go. Delivering the project vision as outlined by Rich requires an estimated investment of $100 million. It is quite a bit, sizably different than the Hub Shopping Center, much larger, more vacancy, completely vacant, all the issues that Rich outlined. The project's estimated return without incentives is 3.76%, obviously resulting in a significant gap to financial feasibility. Using the requested tools that I will outline on the next slide, the estimated rate of return is 10.75% with the incentives, and that would allow us to move forward with the project. The requests before the city, and that we would be prepared to immediately move forward with upon positive confirmation this evening, include the following. Approval of a TIF, 50% pilots, and 100% ETS. We've gone into detail with respect to that in information that we've provided to you and to staff as well. In addition to the 50% pilots, 100% ETS, we are requesting no Price Chopper base transfer for a host of reasons we'll get into on the next slide. An agreement to fund transfers between the special sales taxes that are generated in the top 50% to achieve 100% redirection of incremental sales taxes. Yes, Mayor?
If you could please, for those people watching, please describe what the acronyms for pilots and ETS means, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Pilots are incremental property taxes. The acronym is payment in lieu of taxes. So, we're talking about incremental property taxes created by the project. ETS are economic activity taxes. Those are incremental sales taxes with the project. Thank you, Mayor. I'll attempt to explain acronyms as I go.
I understand. No worries.
Absolutely. Amendment of the existing CID, there is a community improvement district or CID surrounding Nolan Fashion Square. We would request extension of that existing 1% CID sales tax and an approval of a $1 per square foot CID or Community Improvement District Special Assessment. Support by the city for the formation of a TDD or Transportation Development District with a 1% sales tax. A Chapter 100 sales tax exemption on materials. Chapter 100 is a reference to the Missouri statutes of Chapter 100, which provide for industrial revenue bonds and provide a mechanism to allow us to have a sales tax exemption on the purchase of construction materials for the project. And then finally, we'd be requesting, just as we did for the Hub Shopping Center, bonding authority for the TIF, CID, and TDD revenue. It can't be emphasized enough, cannot be emphasized enough, that the city will not be responsible for any payment of debt service associated with those bonds, no payment risk of any kind for the city, and the city is not required to guarantee any revenues. And that's identical to the bond structure that we had for the Hub Shopping Center as well. And then finally, the city's not required to be the issuer of the bonds either. For the Hub Shopping Center, we utilized the Industrial Development Authority as issuer for that. So, that is an outline, a brief outline of the requested tools needed to fill the gap and increase the return on the project to a point at which we can undertake it. As I mentioned, the transfer of the base, we're requesting that the Price Chopper base not be transferred for the project. A redevelopment proposal with that lack of base transfer does not cost the city money. On average, the city actually benefits $120,000 per year based on our outlined structure. Let me explain further, and the details of which were in a more extensive and detailed memo that the development team presented to the city a few months ago. The closure of the existing Price Chopper will occur, based on statements from McKeever's themselves, will occur regardless of the city's decision whether to support this proposal that we're outlining this evening or not for the redevelopment of Nolan Fashion Square. We truly and strongly believe that if Nolan Fashion Square is not redeveloped, that it is highly likely that Price Chopper will relocate to the south side of Highway 40 outside the Independence City limits, and that will result in the city's revenues averaging a loss of approximately $420,000 per year based on the existing performance of the Price Chopper. However, if Nolan Fashion Square is redeveloped in accordance with the plan that we're outlining this evening, the average amount of the city's revenue reduction will be approximately $300,000, and that creates a net better position for the city of $120,000. This is a significant project. It has significant costs and risks associated with it. This is the request that's needed for us to move forward. This will allow us to achieve the necessary financing for the project and allow us to overcome and create really an asset that the city can be proud of. A breakdown of the numbers, a little more specifically. So, just over a $100 million project, the redirected taxes in the form of tax increment finance would fund approximately $24.4 million of that $100 million, or 24%. So, we are requesting a deviation from the city's policy of 20% on this project. We've been open about that since the very beginning of our discussions. Then, the city approved and supported add-on taxes. This is the CID and TDD, sales tax of 1%, and the CID Special Assessment produced about 22%, so $18.9 million on the sales tax side and $3 million on the CID Special Assessment side. And then finally, we'll pair with those public dollars, private dollars of $53.75 million in the project for a total of $100 million. And again, this allows us to achieve a 10.75% rate of return on the project, bringing it up from a return of 3.76% without any incentives. With that, I'll be available to answer questions with respect to the numbers, but Rich is going to come back up and really summarize what it is that we're proposing with Nolan Fashion Square. Rich?
So, I think it comes down to what you see on this slide. I mean, ultimately, what are the benefits to the city of Independence on a property that's been, for all intents and purposes, vacant for the last 15 or 20 years? So, it allows the redevelopment of a blighted property. I mean, it's clear, and you all know it, we know it, and it's been in decline for a long time. We will increase the life of the property, much like the Hub. When the bones get, when the property comes all the way down to its bones and we rebuild it back up, you're looking at another 35- to 50-year life of those buildings to produce income into the city of Independence. We'll preserve and revitalize, you know, a Price Chopper here in town. I mean, their existing store is not what it should be at Nolan and Marketplace. They know it. The store doesn't perform all that well, and we will make sure that they remain a important part of the food distribution process here in the city of Independence. We'll retain existing jobs and produce new jobs. We'll improve the appearance, obviously, of the shopping center, the corner, and it's an entrance into the city of Independence. I mean, all of these things are, when you look at the numbers, you can kind of roll your eyes and say, well, it's a lot of money, and it is a lot of money. But it's an important part to the city, and when you pass that intersection by, it really doesn't do the city justice when you see what that looks like. We'll create a more appealing environment. It'll attract new tenants, the intersection, the traffic volumes, the stoplight addition, the existing traffic signals on Nolan Road, the importance of the Hy-Vee store across the street. All of those are beneficial things to this particular piece of property. We'll produce new businesses that generate increased sales tax, increased income taxes and real estate taxes to the city, and revenue for the future of the city of Independence. So, I think these are the important parts of what happens to Nolan Fashion Square. Not that the numbers aren't there, obviously. Without the numbers and without that foundation, we go no place, but these benefits are truly for the entire community. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Anyone? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Doobie, a couple of things. I've had a month to noodle on the complexity of this. I have to say, I think this is the most complex capital stack we have ever seen comes, and I've only been here three years, so there may have been more complicated ones. But I have a couple of clarifying questions.
Okay.
Can you talk about a special assessment and what that means and who pays it?
The special assessment in this particular case is a real estate tax special assessment that is going to be a dollar a square foot on the buildings themselves. So, if the buildings remain at 280,000 square feet, which they are today, then that will be the amount of real estate taxes paid by the tenants of the shopping center. That $280,000 is not paid by anybody else but the tenants in the center.
Okay. And so, for a special assessment that is paid by the people who set up tenancy, is there restrictions around that, how that can be used? Is there oversight, or that just goes into the big pot and is used to pay the bills?
Those, when John Hanson's slide, if I can go back there perhaps, that 3.16 million you see up there as the CID Special Assessment, that is all part of the capital stack that we have put together that gets reinvested into the property. So, it supports the bonds that with, in addition to our private equity that goes into the deal, goes into the redevelopment.
Okay. Easily, the place that I have the most thoughtfulness is the special taxes. And can you give me an idea of amount of special taxes, like what's our dollar figure that we would be talking about, because that would have to come out of General Fund?
Hey, John, can I impose on you to perhaps explain that a little easier?
Absolutely. And just so I'm answering the correct question, are you asking on an annual basis?
Yes, please.
Approximately what we're talking about in the form of those dollars? So, all of the, I'm looking at a stabilized year, three or four years out. The super TIF, sales tax ETS from not only the city general fund, but all the city special taxes upon stabilization is approximately $750,000 per year.
Okay. So, let me make sure I understand that. $750,000 is the special taxes, or that's the entire ETS?
That is the entire 50%.
Oh, on the pilots.
What is colloquially termed a super TIF.
Okay.
ETS. $290,000 of that, or nearly $300,000, just to use some round figures. $300,000 is general, and then the difference between 765 and 300, or $465,000 would be the special taxes within that segment.
Okay. So, roughly $450,000.
Yes, very close to that. And just a clarification to your prior question, the special assessment will be paid by the property owners. That special assessment will be added to the tax bill, and then those dollars allocated from that portion of the bond issue with respect to the special assessment will need to be spent in accordance with the Community Improvement District Act, which has a very specific set of criteria, and we'll need to meet that.
Okay. So, that requires some reporting to the city and staff signing off on it?
It does.
I want people to understand that this isn't like we write you a big check and we say, "Have a very nice day." We still have some opportunity to make sure that you're following the rules and that we have a line of sight to what's happening there.
That is correct, and that is true of the entire public incentive capital stack, TIF, CID, and TDD. Each of those are governed under state statute and have very specific requirements with respect to the areas in which we can expend those dollars. Furthermore, as we incur those dollars, we'll certify those costs to the city so that staff can review, staff and your professional advisors can review those costs and ensure that as we go along, we're staying in accordance with those requirements.
Okay. Now, this is in an existing CID, so in theory, there was a little bit of money from the previous tenancy that was sitting in a CID fund. I assume this is all expended by this point?
There is a little bit in that fund. I don't have a recent update as to how much is in that fund. By state statute, those dollars need to be spent within the boundary of the Community Improvement District, so we would anticipate doing so.
Okay. So, they would, whatever little residual would come to you, and so, you're not anticipating adding a CID. You're talking about extending the life of the existing CID that was previously approved?
100% correct. Yes.
Okay. So, in your video, you can see the absolute destruction of AC units on the roof. So, I'm going to come back with my question to you. Do you anticipate design that prevents access or protects those assets so that you're not having to replace those again in the future? I personally think you're going to have a whole lot less bad activity I personally think you're going to have a whole lot less bad activity once that is a vibrant area with people coming and going, but still, the question has to be asked.
Absolutely. And I'll let Mr. Duby speak to the operations and property management of the project.
Yes, we will be very cognizant of that. I do believe, Bridget, that what you have there is, obviously, people have lived here in these buildings. People have stripped out all the wires, so when there's no activity, I mean, this is blight at what occurs when something is abandoned. So as we look to renovate the property, of course, we will be very cognizant of how people get on the roof or don't get on the roof. And we usually have security, as we do at the hub, we have security that goes on over there certain days, certain nights, where we keep an eye on what's happening. We have cameras also at the hub that does the same thing, which we will do here. Great question. I just think it's a whole different environment when it becomes completely vacant.
Mr. City Manager, question for you. Well, first, of all the things that people complain to me about, it makes sense that people in Fourth District complain about Nolan Fashion Square, but I am stunned by how many people in First and Second District bring up Nolan Fashion Square as such an eyesore. So I would say is the number one thing that I get questions about. I know that the city is having to have responsibilities on this property. Could you just touch on kind of what's the city expenditure? I don't need a number, I just sort of categories.
Yeah, and it has involved a number of city departments and divisions. In no particular order, it has involved our property maintenance code enforcement officers for tall grass and weeds, broken windows, different violations of our property maintenance code, dangerous building officials and the violations that fall within the city's dangerous building code. It has involved calls up for service for the fire department when fires have been started within the vacant structures. It has involved police calls for service, whether that be theft or on a particularly bad day when the police department found a deceased person inside one of the buildings. So it, I may be forgetting something in there, but those have certainly, oh yeah, certainly our law department, sorry bud, yep, and as well as our city utilities, billing issues, vandalism too, oh, things like our pad-mounted transformers, et cetera. So there's, I would probably be easier to say the city departments that have not been required to respond to an issue there than to name all the others that have, and it far exceeds those that have not.
So this is privately owned by Block &amp; Company? And are they responsible for paying back any of those excess costs or those are all borne by the city?
When we have had expenditures related to our dangerous building enforcement or our property maintenance code enforcement, when we've had to perform abatements to that property, then the property owner is responsible for repayment of those expenses. They are billed for those, invoiced for those. However, things like stolen transformers, police and fire calls for services, et cetera, no, that is the taxpayers of Independence that are bearing the brunt of that cost. And not only bearing the brunt of that cost, but that, of course, a diversion of those resources away. So when one property is disproportionately commanding the attention of those resources, it has a negative adverse impact on our ability to serve the community equitably in other areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, thanks for coming and laying this all out for us and talking us through the details. It's very helpful to have the whole picture of what you're trying to accomplish and what you're asking from us. I wondered if, so I had some of the similar questions as Dr. McCandless, and so I won't ask those again because you've answered those, but I was wondering, do you have any other, besides Price Chopper, do you have any other prospective tenants that you could, that you can talk about or, you know?
I won't talk about them by name, but there are, we do have a major hardware operator interested in the main building. We have two discount fashion retailers interested in what would be the south side of the building that Price Chopper is going to be in, so the very far south portion of that. That represents, so the Price Chopper building's about 120,000 feet. Price Chopper's going to be roughly half of that, or 63,000 square feet. These two retailers that I'm talking about can operate in tandem, and collectively, they would represent about 35,000 square feet. So with a little bit of luck, that first building, what we call Building Three, that includes Price Chopper, we could have 95 or 100,000 square feet committed to there along the process of when we're trying to sell the bonds, so still in the planning stage. But yeah, negotiations are going well, or I should say, discussions are going well, but so much of it hinges on, we can't really get serious with these folks until we know we can move this deal forward. So, but it's a great question, and there is a lot of interest in both the brokerage community who has reached out to us with various opportunities that they think will fit in a redevelop project. So yes, there is interest.
Great, great. Well, that's helpful. And talk just briefly about, you mentioned, I should say, the concept of super TIF. Can you specify a little bit more about what makes this a super TIF versus a regular TIF?
That's a great question. I will get John back up here so that you get the right answer.
It's a little bit of an informal terminology. It's not a terminology that exists in state statute, but in the tax increment finance statute, it provides what I would call a typical TIF to be 100 percent pilots or incremental property tax and 50 percent economic activity taxes. When you go above the 50 percent economic activity taxes, that is when it can be referenced as super TIF. And we're only requesting the portions of those taxes that are the city taxes, either general or special taxes with respect to that. But anytime, even if you exceed it just by 1 percent, 51 percent, technically, that would be known as that. It's also, could be referred to as a sales tax, an additional sales tax rebate.
Okay, all right, thank you. And this is probably for the city manager. The city manager, I was talking with someone the other day, and the question was, is what happens if everything goes great and they have funds left over at the end of the CID? What happens to, or the end of the TIF, either one? What happens to those funds? Where do they go at the end of that timeframe?
I would ask if you're okay with it that we bring our bond counsel, David Martin Ford from Gilmore Bell, to provide a little bit more polished answer.
You bet.
David Martin with Gilmore and Bell, Bond and Economic Development Counsel to the City. So each statute under which one of those incentives is authorized has its own statement of what happens to surplus or leftover funds. Essentially, if you have that with respect to the TIF component, those funds are rebated to the taxing jurisdictions from which they were collected. If you have CID with excess funds or a TDD, you're supposed to find a way to spend the funds within the existing jurisdiction. So it's less able in those circumstances to rebate those collected taxes to those that collected them, and that's why they have a different sort of wind-up procedure. So what we do is we build into the contracts, the redevelopment agreement and the bond documents, that the special districts, the TDD and CID are supposed to be wrapped up quickly after they fully achieve their purpose, when the bonds are paid and there's no more reimbursable project cost from those sources to the developer, so that you don't end up with a big surplus at the end.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bell, while you're up there, what, I guess from your perspective as our bond counsel, is there anything, you know, that you've seen in this proposal that gives you any concern?
So legally, no. We've worked through with the developer and they have formulated their request in the manner that we suggested so that it is legally firm. It is, as they've described, a super TIF or additional reimbursement TIF, so that's always something that cities will consider a little more cautiously.
Okay, all right. I think those are my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this might be a good question for you. Our community has been burned with a TIF at Bass Pro. And so I was wondering if you can talk about why it's different, what the differences are?
Certainly. So the difference here, and this is the same thing that allowed the city to get comfortable with the hub development, is that the city will not provide shortfall backing for any obligations that are issued as part of this transaction. And what that means is, in the Bass Pro and several other TIF transactions that the city has entered into, the city agreed when bonds were issued that it would simply pay, subject to annual appropriation, the debt service that came due on those bonds. It intended to make those payments from a variety of project-generated sources, but it was not limited in its obligation to those sources. In this circumstance, the city will not agree to provide that backing. So if we issue bonds, and they'll likely be issued through the Industrial Development Authority, not the city itself, and we get into a situation 10 years down the road where the project-generated sources are insufficient to pay those bonds, that will be the bondholder's problem. They will receive less money than was anticipated. It will not be the city's obligation to bridge that gap.
Thank you. And then my last question is, so Price Chopper is moving from the location they're currently at, and they think they'll do better, have a better, have a better chance in the Nolan Fashion area? Is that right?
Yes. The answer to your first question is, February of '28, their existing lease expires. They're done. Alan McKeever has authorized me to say that publicly. Their store, if you've been in it, is in desperate need of being retrofitted. So their decision is spend the money at Nolan Fashion Square, and therefore, yes, they have great confidence that sales will be significantly greater, given the accessibility to this property, to a greater amount of population, certainly a much easier ingress/egress to their, to the property than the existing one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
I just have, I just have one question. So this may be premature, but since TIFs depend on strong sales, what's your plan for attracting the businesses since it's mostly vacant, well, all vacant, other than what's coming?
Yeah. In the realm of leasing vacant real estate like this, I mean, you have to start with the right location. And I think that each of you know the Hy-Vee store across the street is extremely successful. So the traffic flow is at this property, but they don't have additional ability to attract tenants over there. So when we get Price Chopper into this, that's the beginning of what happens. A Price Chopper store in this particular location can attract, you know, a consistent flow of traffic, which is what basic cleaning stores will look for, other operators who want that specific traffic to come in there. Again, the community, the real estate community of Kansas City has reached out to us on multiple occasions with all kinds of users that want to be here. We've had conversations with Olive Garden, who said, you guys get this done, we'll remodel our building, whether we'll tear it down and build a new one. Now, this is all talk at this point, but if you don't start with that particular issue, and that's where the momentum comes from. So the minute we can start to go public, we've been pretty quiet about this, not knowing that we're not going to stick the city on the hook for, you know, something that we think we should do, but the city hasn't agreed to. So once we get to a place, if we understand the city is backing this particular project, then we can go public with it, and that's what starts the momentum of additional tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. My colleague spurred a couple of extra questions for me. So since the McKevers are leaving that site, and none of this solves the problem of the hole in, that will still be empty? The space that they are vacating will be empty, and that doesn't change with whatever we are planning here with Nolan Fashion Square?
Yes, so let me just understand the question. Are you asking me if there's a use for their vacant building? There is none to my knowledge. I'm not part of that particular property nor the ownership of that particular property. So to the best of my knowledge, there is not a reuse of that building at this point, although that shopping center, for whatever it's worth, has got a pretty darn good amount of tenants in it. So it has been reasonably successful. The Price Chopper store has not been.
I just want to be sure that the, so on balance, I am weighing two important things. I am weighing a big investment from the city, and it's both money and loss of revenue, right? The reduction in Price Chopper as well as paying back the special taxes against what the drag is of Nolan Fashion Square on our whole city and the cost that we are outlaying in order for it to be a blighted property. So this is my conundrum. What I want to be sure is that you, you talked about fashion coming in there. I just want to be sure that we're not harvesting other existing businesses to come into this space and subsidizing them moving as opposed to bringing new resources and new opportunities for shopping into our town. I know you can't answer that because you can't disclose who they are, but that gives me pause. I just want to be sure that that sensitivity is part of your calculus as you're thinking about who you would be bringing into your shopping center.
We're very sensitive to the fact that taking existing Independence operations and bringing them to Nolan Fashion Square would not be our primary motivation. I will tell you that one of the discount retailers that reached out to us is located in Independence. And in our numbers that we presented to the city, we acknowledge that piece. Whether we're going to do a deal with them or not, I don't know, but they are one of the two. The other one is not in Independence as we speak.
Rich, man?
Yeah.
And just to further clarify that point, while we're asking for no base transfer with respect to Price Chopper, if we do relocate another retailer, it will be within your authority to make a finding that it is beneficiary of tax increment finance and the base would transfer, thus protecting the economic activity base of the city.
Okay, I don't speak finance very well, so start over with the whole base transfer thing and explain that like I am a third grader.
So the base transfer, the statute provides that the city can make a finding for relocation. So if a retailer, for example, is doing $5 million worth of sales in its current location, you are enjoying, the city is enjoying a certain tax revenue stream off of that $5 million of taxable sales. If we move that retailer into Nolan Fashion Square, you, as a city council, have the right to find that it's a beneficiary of tax increment finance and essentially transfer that base over such that the city and other taxing jurisdictions continue to receive the revenue as if they were in another location. And that's just a higher base that we have to exceed before we get a split of the incremental sales taxes for the project.
So the simple version is they get carved out?
In a sense, yes. They are part of our project. They would produce Community Improvement District sales tax revenue, transportation development sales tax revenue, but the city's revenues and county's sales tax revenues and Zoo District, their revenues would be protected and not impacted by that relocation.
Okay. The Price Chopper will be much smaller in its current, or it's in its future location, by how much?
The existing Price Chopper store in Nolan Marketplace is 83,000 square feet. This store will be 63,000 feet, so a 20,000-foot reduction or roughly 25 percent.
Okay. And then my last question is, do we anticipate the competition with Hy-Vee? Okay. And then my last question is, do we anticipate the competition with Hy-Vee to actually impede their sales? You don't want to just cannibalize one to support the other. Now, we see all the time that, you know, Starbucks next to Scooters actually increases both of their activities. So I just, you're in the business for grocery stores, you should have a sense, are they different clientele? How does this work?
Yes, they really are, different clientele. I mean, if Price Chopper's going to get sales from anybody, it's going to be Walmart or Neighborhood Market, more of the price-oriented retailers than someone like Hy-Vee. Not that they're not, but they're not, they certainly have a different price perspective than Price Chopper does. So there will be, you know, would they have somewhat of a loss because they're now across the street? Perhaps. It'll be very minor, because they're already a half mile away down at Nolan Road. So there could be, but by coming to Nolan and 40, we expand the trading area. It allows for customers to come from a farther distance, given the convenience of both of those two major streets, which primarily Highway 40 is what we're looking at.
And competing with Walmart, they are located conveniently in Kansas City. I won't say anymore about that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please proceed.
One other question, this probably for the city manager. So after tonight, what's the process that we'll undertake to, you know, consider proposal that's before us?
It would mirror and look a lot like the process for the hub redevelopment that came before the council. So city staff, Bond Council, Mr. Martin, who was just up here, will work alongside of Mr. Dubey and his team to put together a development agreement for city council consideration. As you heard tonight, ideally, we'd like to have that in front of the council in February of next year, which is really, you know, just a few months away. But that development agreement would spell out the responsibilities of the developer. It would spell out the responsibilities of the city. It would include terms of the economic incentives that are involved in the project, et cetera. So to Councilmember McCandless's point, making sure that there's those metrics of accountability for both parties in there. So really, these next several months, while February may seem far off, it's going to be important that we're very focused and intentional about finalizing those agreements and those responsibilities, so that we can put a good document in front of council for your consideration.
And I'm guessing this will also go before the TIF Commission to
Yes. And that's another group that will need to be advised of this project, and then consulted for their recommendations. So yes, that's another step that will need to be built into our timeline.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Other questions? If I may, Mr. Dubey, just ask one other question. Have you ever taken on a task that's this ambitious, because this is almost no occupancy?
Matter of fact, we did, Mayor. So in upstate New York, Syracuse, suburb of Syracuse, Cicero, New York, and there we bought a, I think it was 83% vacant enclosed mall, and ended up, coincidentally, putting a Price Chopper into that center. Now, that's the Goleb family. All Price Choppers started here in Missouri, but the name split off and went east, and the Goleb family runs a chain now of about 160 stores out east. And then we put a Lowes Home Improvement Center in there. So it was larger, it was enclosed, a lot of it went to the ground instead of redeveloping. But yes, we've been in projects like this that were as vacant, you know. There were 17% tenants there, but I mean, they were very small tenants and not a big part of the redevelopment plan.
But it's still operating and became successful and
Yeah, it's still there. In fact, it was one of our most successful projects also. We were extremely happy with Syracuse, New York, both financially, and it's still sitting there. And the fellow that bought it from us, the ICSC, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers, has a convention every year in Las Vegas, and this owner always comes over to us and thanks us for selling him that property. So we're happy and he's happy. But yes, we have.
You want to see a win-win, so very, very good. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing nothing else, Mr. City Manager, anything else on this item for your discussion?
Nothing for us, Mayor. Do appreciate the council's thoughtful dialogue tonight, Mr. Dubey and his team coming into town for their presentation. Just be assured, we'll be working closely with them over those next several months to get that development agreement in front of you for your consideration.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And next up is Wally's presentation. Thank you. And so I don't know if you want to frame this up, and I know Councilmember Fierce puts us on the agenda, so I'll defer to him, too, if he wants to make a statement or bring this up.
Sure. I'm happy to. I guess, you know, in visiting with Mr. Rubenstein, he indicated desire to come for the council in a study session format to talk more about the project. And so I think there's a couple of gentlemen from Wally's here tonight. It's really helpful for us who sit here on the council to hear from you and learn as much as we can about your proposal. I do understand that next week, we're only voting on the special use permit for the gas pumps. I understand that. But it's helpful to learn more about Wally's as an organization and understand how what you're proposing will impact our community. So anxious to hear what you have to share with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Fierce. Appreciate it. And thank you to everybody in Independence for the invitation to the study session. We really do appreciate the opportunity to get out in front of the community, answer questions, and at least get the information correct to you, and try to address any concerns that anybody has. I'll start by introducing myself. My name is Nathan Hale. I'm our Director of Construction and Development. I actually have been with Wally's during the construction of the very first store in Pontiac, Illinois. So I go back all the way to day one. What I've got for you this evening is a very basic presentation with some renderings, a site plan. I can give you some overall general information about the store, number of employees, things of that sort, and then I'd be more than happy to take more specific questions. If anything comes up, please feel free to stop me right then, whether it's a particular slide or something that I cover, or anything like that. I'd be more than happy to answer it. And hopefully, I can get this to work, too. So... So one of the tremendous things about Wally's is our vibe, right? That's, we're not your regular, everyday convenience store. We're definitely not a truck stop. We're not a gas station. We are the home of the Great American Road Trip. And what better location to have the Great American Road Trip than Independence, Missouri, where the Great American story is. You put the two together, I can't think of a better combination. This is pictures of our Great American Road Trip sign. This is in Pontiac, Illinois, where we did a roundabout as you pull into the property. This sign's far enough off of the interstate that it's actually illuminated, has some blinking and twinkles to it, kind of gives it that Vegas feel and attracts people. Tends to be one of those things, we get a lot of selfies and pictures taken directly in front of it. This is the front of the Pontiac store. What you'll notice, very bright, vibrant, lot of glass. The wood down below is a Niche Ha siding. The top portion of the gray and the orange is Ephesus, or something very similar to Stucco. The balance of the building that's not really shown in this picture, what we like to do is a brick, as well as more Niche Ha siding. Something that Michael always loves to stress when he comes in is the food and drink experience. And if I didn't use this statistic, I'd be in a lot of trouble, that our transactions of inside sales outnumber fuel transactions five to one. So anybody that thinks that you're simply truck stop, gas station, or simply selling fuel, that's why this is such an important part of the process to us, is the quality of our food. Our VP of Operations is an executive chef by trade. He comes from the food industry, multiple country clubs in the St. Louis metro. So we take a lot of pride in our food and our retail merchandise. Once again, that segue into retail. Multiple Wally's branded items. You'll notice that we carry our own line of hats, shirts, drinkware and gear, as well as miscellaneous stickers, camping gear, and other additional retail items. Restrooms. One of the things that you have got to get right, if you are going to be in this business. The current plan that we have drawn up for Independence would have 22 individual women's restrooms, and this is a sampling, this just shows you what the Fenton store looks like, and 17 individual men's stalls. Everything, private walls, closed doors, complete privacy. We have around-the-clock restroom attendants that take out the trash, clean the sinks, clean the floors, attend to the stalls. Bear with me on this one. I don't think that it plays on the slide here. Here we go. This is something that our civil engineer put together. I think it really captures the feeling of coming off of Nolan Road. So you would have just turned off of Nolan Road, you'd be heading east into the parcel, and this is just a civil rendering of what the site would look like, based upon our preliminary site plan. It's about 30 seconds. It'll show you the fuel canopy to the right, our building, which is approximately 52,000 square feet on the left, the Niche Ha siding, all of the glass, the Ephesus, the bright white channel letters, more of the masonry work. Then we'll come down here, take a left. It'll sort of veer to the north along the existing residential subdivision, and you'll notice the landscape buffer, as well as the wall, that is an actual wall up at the top of the hill, to provide a buffer and separation from the private commercial property to the residents to the north and the east of us. There is also going to be a retaining wall, which shows up very well in this one, along our parcel, down along the driveway, to help with the grade transition. Site plan. I'll try to skim over it. It's in the packet. I've brought handouts for council if they wanted to review them. I have to apologize in advance. I wasn't sure what kind of format a study session was. I didn't know if we'd all just have pizzas and sit around the table, or, you know, if I could get a highlighter out here and start coloring. So general concept, you see the improvements to Nolan Road. You see the large open detention basin, canopy for 42 working fuel dispensers, that's 84 fueling positions, and then the 52, 53,000 square foot building itself. This was prepared for the Planning Commission, and during that meeting, I had our traffic engineer with us. And she is not here this evening due to previous commitments. I'd be more than happy to flip through these slides, and if anybody would have particular questions about 70, Nolan Road, Lynn Street, or Canterbury, I'd be more than happy to field them to the best of my ability. We have already completed our traffic study. It has been submitted both to the City of Independence, as well as to Missouri DOT. We are going through our second round of review comments with both jurisdictions currently. Some of the different scenarios that are studied by Lockmuller and Associates, when they not only take the traffic study or assessment, but when they project out what traffic will be by forecasting it, you notice that they do not only in 2026, but they do a 20-year look ahead, which they are trying to predict to year 2046. General aerial pictures of the extents, the limits that the traffic study had to go to, and how far. Some of the existing conditions, I think that one of the things that not only we heard at Planning Commission, but we hear from neighboring residents, and I'm sure we're going to hear from this council, is traffic. It's a huge concern. It's a concern for us. It's an existing busy road. So one of the things that we're going to do is try to address some of the problems that are there today and improve them. Now, I'm not going to make things up and say that we're not going to bring additional traffic, but what we are going to do is bring additional capacity for Nolan Road and for those ramps on I-70. So I'm not trying to just add traffic to what you've got. I'm trying to come up with a solution and minimize what's out there currently. Trip generation, this is based upon Lockmuller's study. They studied not only our Pontiac store, the four busiest times that we have, but also our Fenton store. They use those to generate the amount of trips that the store will create, based on number of fuel dispensers, the acreage of the site, and also the square footage of the building. And those are comps that are used nationally, if you want to compare them to a Buc-E's or a QuickTrip or somebody The traffic impact study report, just documenting the numbers of turns and the flows going through up and down Nolan Road and along 70. Now, this is what Julie and her team actually came up with, and I will skim these, because I think that the recommendations they made are more than thorough. I think they're a little bit over the top in terms of what we had planned for budget and what we thought was necessary, but this is what our traffic engineer felt made the site work, and was not only fair to Nolan Road, but would also appease MoDOT and make this corridor not only beneficial to Independence, but also beneficial to us and Nolan Road. So one of the first things you see is increasing the acceleration and deceleration lanes on 70. They are both actually shorter than where they are typically up and down I-70. We would lengthen each one by approximately 180 to 250 feet. At Nolan and I-70, we would also extend the four-lane section of that eastbound approach to a total 400-foot distance from that stop bar. When you come off of 70 westbound to turn north onto Nolan Road, we would add an additional northbound, westbound, right turn lane that would be signalized as you get off of 70, would help to control some of the queue there, and would also direct traffic on Nolan Road and stop it or slow it from merging into existing Nolan Road traffic. More recommendations regarding Nolan and Lynn. I would probably prefer that staff with our traffic engineer ask those questions and address them. But I will tell you, one of the biggest concerns we had was, there's an offset in Lynn Court by the QuickTrip, as well as the Wine Brothers, and we are attempting to remedy that the best we can, to try to straighten out that offset and make that a safer and more efficient intersection. Canterbury is the existing private road that goes up behind Denny's and Walgreens and the Hardee's. That's currently a private road. Our goal would be to bring it up to Independence' standards and dedicate it as right-of-way. So we would have to put all the necessary infrastructure in, bring it up to storm sewer standards, curb and gutter, asphalt paving, and then give the access to the existing businesses along it that back up to it. That is our intent. Nothing much else along Canterbury and Lynn. Nolan and 42nd is one that was... We received multiple comments, both from city staff, as well as from MoDOT. What we agreed on was that it made most sense to call that a three-quarter access intersection. So essentially, you can right turn out, they can right turn in, and westbound traffic on 42nd can turn into the parcel. But there would be no left turn out of Canterbury, because it's just too tight, too difficult of an intersection. The proximity to Nolan Road and the light is just way too close, and none of the traffic engineers felt safe with it. More backup information about the forecast and analysis. Like I said, I recommend that Julie would address any traffic engineering-specific questions about the 2046, and I am more than happy to answer your questions.
All right.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Well, appreciated that. I, you know, it was real helpful when we were down in St. Charles last week to visit the Fenton store. Very helpful. And also, please pass along my appreciation to Mr. Rubenstein for making his traffic engineer available to answer a number of questions. I spent about hour with her. Very helpful. Discussion was, you know, able to answer all my questions about the traffic impact to our community. So that was real helpful. Councilmember McCandless asked last week about anything, if you had any more information about, and these are, if you don't have answers to these questions, that's fine, but questions relative to the fuel facility, and, you know, what happens if in X number of years it's no longer there? How that gets cleaned up?
Absolutely. So everything that is installed, in terms of any petroleum underground storage tank in Missouri, is regulated, controlled, and inspected by the DNR. And there are also insurance funds in place through the state for bid that would help with cleanup in the event of any spill. We actually are a member of that fund and contribute to it on a regular basis. Plus, there are also additional insurance funds, up to $1 million, to not only assist with the cleanup, but also help with the removal. And then there are four or five different federal and regional programs, from brownfields to, there's another one in Missouri that is specific to the Midwest that does benefit. When we install our tanks, everything is done within federal regulations, as well as following state guidelines and regs. state guidelines and regs, and Missouri has some of the, I won't call them the stricter, but they are definitely not the most lenient in the United States. They are a little bit tougher than certain other states that you would be surprised by. So, we have obviously built a successful travel center in Fenton that council member Fears had the ability to visit and look at, and we're very proud of the method of construction and how we monitor and manage all of our compliance, as well as our leak protection security as well.
Great, that is helpful. I think the other thing that I would ask about, you know, like I said, I understand that we're only, we're not voting on maybe all elements that are becoming, that will eventually come before us, but I still believe it's important for us on the council to understand as much as possible about any proposal that is being made for the city. And so that's why I asked some of the questions I did last week of Mr. Rubenstein. I just think it's helpful to have as much information as we can. So, I don't know if you have any more information relative to incentives or anything of that nature. If you do, that would be great. If you don't, then you don't, so that's fine.
So, in the event that we were going to be asked at all about incentives, obviously, I believe Michael spoke at the Planning Commission and was asked by one of the commissioners, are you going to go after incentives? And Michael was very honest and said, "We will not go after any city-backed incentives, they will all be developer-backed." And I thought that the Tri-Land presentation did a very good job with John of explaining the difference between them and kind of lining that out. And one of the things that I know I'd like to make extremely clear is that a lot of times when developers go for incentives, they're looking to reduce the cost of the project to try to sweeten the margin on that project and make it more feasible and make a profit on it. We are the end user in this project, and eight to nine million dollars of, if we go for incentives, will go for public improvements, whether that be to 70, Nolan Road, Canterbury, Lynn Street, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, et cetera. They're all improvements that will be dedicated to Independence and utilized not only by the Wallys, but as well as the Nolan Road corridor and residents of the community.
So, any incentives you would ask for would be really for that whole setting, for the development of the, you know, the improvements to the roadways and other, you know, infrastructure there?
The bulk of our incentives would all be geared towards Nolan Road improvements, obviously at the 70, the on-ramps and off-ramps, as well as the realignment of Lynn coming in, and then the dedication of Canterbury. And like I said, we would have to, I believe the city is still going through a study for their sanitary sewer, so we've made a couple of fair estimates of what that size would be and what those distances would be, but we would look to run brand-new sanitary sewer through our site, as well as get rid of all water main and run new water main through the parcel as well. And all of that would be turned over to Independence.
Gotcha.
And if we'd have, not that I want to go down that road, but if we'd have incentive-specific questions, I have brought our council from Pulsonelli, if we needed to address anything that specific. Curtis, would you want to just bring us up to speed maybe on where we're at with David and his team? I think council might appreciate that, and that might put you at ease a little bit.
Mayor and council, good evening. Kurt Peterson with Pulsonelli. As Nate said, we are assisting with the public finance part of the project. At the outset, referencing the hub gets you almost completely there because we were able to see that really good model that was so effective, you know, really recently. And so, TIF, 1% add-on community improvement district sales tax, 1% add-on transportation development district sales tax. I'm glad that John already defined all the terms for me here tonight, the acronyms, mayor. So, really, that model plus a payment to the city, just like the hub, to help with other public improvements that are prioritized in this corridor by the city. So, that's the overview. In terms of the question that I was asked, in terms of status, working with Mr. Martin over here with Gilmore and Bell, there's a massive paperwork, as you know, that goes along with this that ultimately leads to you making a decision as a governing body. So, at this very moment, we have, as I look at David Martin to give me the nod here, we have the paperwork in great position, in fact, very shortly likely going out with the 45-day notices, is always that kickoff point, and everything seems to flow from that. So, I think I'm not on a limb saying days from now, going to be sending out that notice. So, that's the update. Happy to get deeper if any of you want to tonight, but I know we'll be back in front of you too soon.
Okay. Thankful, that's helpful. I think I'm done with my questions.
Okay. Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be sure I understood correctly that you would make the improvements and Canterbury would be turned over to the city for it being a public access?
Yes, absolutely. We've been having pre-development discussions with staff at the city for approximately three years now, and bringing it up to city standard or code in terms of, right now, it's a parking lot is what it's being used as. And it's blighted and it's an ISO, it needs to be brought up to the proper city section with curb and gutter, the sidewalk, the right-of-way, the storm sewer, et cetera, and then it would be dedicated to Independence.
And then you said you were going to touch on number of staff, revenues?
Absolutely. Number of staff, we envision 200 to 210 employees when we open. Full-time versus part-time, I'm going to rough that out and say approximately 160 full-time to start and plus or minus 50 part-timers. We see a lot of seasonal fluctuation due to college students, and we try to employ as many as possible. And also, if you've got a school in the area, sometimes they go home for summer, but it tends to be one of our very reliable employees.
And can you tell me what your rough revenues are at one of your other stores?
It would be seasonal. So, like I said, depending upon whether we're on a travel weekend and we see seven or eight thousand cars a day, or we're in the middle of February and it's 20 below, I can tell you that stores will sometimes see revenue of fuel and inside sales both in excess of $50,000 a day.
Okay.
I try not to give a number that sets the bar too high, nor too low, knowing that everything's dependent upon weather, the time of the year, the season, et cetera.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anyone else have other further questions?
Mr. Mayor, please proceed. Thank you. Well, thank you for coming and presenting. I had the opportunity, I wasn't along with council member Fears and Wiley, meeting with Ed down there in the St. Louis area when we were there for the MML, but I did sneak off and go take a look at your facility, and it is very nice, very clean, and being in the grocery business, the one thing I loved about your building, the aisles are nice and clear and you can walk right down them, so big kudos to that. For me, the incentives, even though they're not city-backed incentives, is an important part of this project, and I understand, as long as everyone else here, that what we will be reviewing at in a couple of weeks is the special use permit to allow the gas pumps to be there, because that's the thing that's actually triggering this special use permit, is that. Is it safe to say, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, that all incentives are on the table? I've heard plenty of comment from citizens and stuff that this will not have any kind of TIF, any type of tax increment financing, but is it fair to say that all incentives are on the table?
I would say any incentive that we could go for that would benefit us in funding these improvements that not only benefit the site but also the community and get turned over, absolutely. We would utilize any instrument possible to try to help not only make the project happen, but ease some of the burden on us and not only the city but our investors, and make the project go even more quickly.
Has it been three years or four years?
Since we started with pre-development or closed on the property.
All of it, I guess. How about pre-develop? Let's just start there.
Three years since pre-development. We had already started meeting with Tom and his team three years ago, and then we closed in October of '23, I believe, closed on Halloween of '23. So, it's kind of fitting, given the status of how the property was that we closed on that day.
For sure. Well, thank you for taking it, and I know you guys have done quite a bit of work there, knocking down an ISO and all that. So, my questions can be very pointed, but please don't misunderstand where I'm coming from here. You've had this property this long, and you've seen the Mr. Doobie in Tri-Land's presentation, why is there not a financial package here before the city that we can review and look at?
It's a fair question and a very good question. One of the reasons that we can't even get to that point is that it's taken so long to get comments back, not only from Missouri DOT, but then those comments need to be shared with staff and Independence. We do not get those comments directly, they go to the city, the city reviews them, and then they look at them. So, anytime that we have anything, and let me step back one time, we saw a six-month delay before we did our traffic study because we wanted school to be in session, and we also wanted it to be nice weather out. So, I believe our traffic study was done in end of April, early May, because we have two entirely different school hours to collect, and we wanted it to be nice weather outside. So, instead of pushing a winter weather traffic study when traffic conditions may have been terrible and counts might have been low, we wanted to see them at peak or near Optum so we could actually utilize that information in generating a better traffic plan. Now, like I said, that explains five to six months. By the time you get in, we've had multiple discussions and negotiations with Missouri DOT and multiple with staff in Independence as well. You can't budget the project until you know what the project is.
Good point, fair point. But with the build-out, do you have a pretty good understanding of what your fixed costs minus the traffic?
In terms of just the Wallys improvement alone, whether it be petroleum, the building, the concrete paving on-site, in terms of our 14 to 16 acres, absolutely yes. But by the time you factor in Lynn Street, Canterbury, there's a sewer that goes directly through our site, the water main is also up to the city's review and approval, all of those go right through the site, and we can't do anything with that site until we would have our incentives in place. That's probably something that Curtis can speak to in terms of the study and the documentation that you need to present to the TIF commission as well as the council in terms of getting your incentives. So, I hate to say that there's other things that are holding the project up, but having that blight study and the factors being in place is one of them.
Well, I appreciate your candidness. As I, you know, formulate my information and present my vote in a couple of weeks, taking this holistically is something that I like to look at. Three years is a long time not to really get to this point and not have anything to be able to show to the council, so that's a concern, but I appreciate your candidness and explaining why we don't have one. Is there any anticipation in the next year, perhaps, eight months, that we might be able to get a financial package from you?
Absolutely. I don't see any issue with it. The goal that we've been trying to achieve is to get our, there's no project if the UDO amendment didn't pass and then the special use. So, had we put an entire package together and brought it to the city, there was no need to review it nor vote on it until we could get the land properly zoned, which entailed getting the UDO amendment and the special use because of being a gas station. So, now we've gotten through that point of Planning Commission, and now we're at that next step with the city council, and that will allow us to expedite everything we have. We've kind of been sitting here, it's a little bit of a back and forth. I know Michael uses the reference of the chicken or the egg, and you get tired of hearing it, but you need such a level of approval before you can take that next step.
Agreed.
One of the good news is in Independence, staff has full review and Missouri DOT gets full review over all of our improvements. Everything has to meet code, ordinance, amendment, et cetera.
With your development that you have outside of St. Louis, did you go through those same traffic studies with the DOT?
We were not required to do so. That was in the old Chrysler plant, and that was one of the outlots, and that is a long-term land lease, without getting into the details of it, but we actually signed an extended period lease on that parcel, and our right, our use was already approved.
Oh, that's nice, for sure. Well, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else have other further questions with regards to anything else? Okay. Very good. Mr. City Manager, you have any questions?
Nothing further, sir. Just a reminder to the council and the community, both these items, the special use permit and the UDO amendment will be up for consideration in two weeks at the October 6 meeting.
Okay. Very good. And if I can ask Mr. Kovar just a question on this, I know you represent a number of cities. This is the first time I've ever seen a developer be required to do work on MoDOT property and pay for it out of their own pocket. Have you ever seen that in the state of Missouri of any cities that you represent?
I have seen developers pay for what would otherwise be considered MoDOT improvements for if MoDOT was not in a position or...
Or willing to do it.
Or willing or do it on the timeline. So, I don't know enough about this project and the details, but I have seen, you know, on occasion, a developer pay for what would otherwise be considered MoDOT improvements, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, in my mind, it wouldn't be common.
I wouldn't say it's common, but I have seen it before.
Right. So, just a thought in my mind in the processes, because with Mr. Doobie's process that he's going through, he doesn't need a UDO, he doesn't need to do the other improvements, he doesn't need to do any of that, so he's able to come to us with a financial package because he knows what his fixed costs are and his structure is.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
And so, with the Wally situation, it's different because it's more fluid, you've got to get, you've got to step through other steps in order to get there, in order to, you know, before you can put the deck in the back of the house, you've got to be able to buy the house.
I would agree with that, yes.
Okay. So, just wanted to clarify that. Perfect, thank you very much. Anyone else have other questions? All right. With that, we will go to the next one, but we've gone an hour and a half. I would indulge everyone if we could take a five-minute break and come back, and then we'll talk about the discussion of municipal court, if that's good with everyone in the council. Thank you. if that's good with everyone in the council. Thank you.
Hey, do you need any cough drops? Because I do.
All right, Mr. City Manager, as we resume, the next thing is municipal court and the facilities there. I asked this to be on there once Judge Helms had sent out an email regarding, on September the 10th, saying he had concerns about that. I just thought it was important to have a discussion about this and say, what are your concerns? What do we need to do? What do we need to do as a council? Unless you have anything that you need to bring up, Mr. City Manager, before we start.
Yeah, I'd just share a couple of quick thoughts on this, Mayor. So as you mentioned, this is really a follow-up to our September 8 conversation where the council was looking at a number of municipal facilities and functions and where we were going to have those. And at that time, as you mentioned, Mayor, there was reservations expressed about, you know, a municipal court. I would say, you know, as I mentioned in that meeting on the 8th, this conversation really does have a somewhat heightened sense of urgency because as we began to transition to Independence Municipal Commons, our new home, there's been interest expressed by Midcontinent Public Library about bringing their administrative headquarters to this site. An exciting project, capital expenditure of $45 to $50 million, 150 full-time employees that would be here on the square, not to mention just the, you know, job retention, economic growth, et cetera. I think we all received, city staff as well as members of the council, a good email this past Friday from our municipal court administrator, Natalie Tan, which had identified some of those original concerns, but after having toured police headquarters, some of those solutions that could be worked into that. And I won't enumerate each of those individually, but I did want to express my gratitude to Ms. Tan's email because I thought it was very thoughtful. So, Mayor, next steps on this, previously at the September 8 meeting, I believe Councilmember Wiley had brought up having a work group to review some of those options and bring back a recommendation. I do want to be clear, that group has not yet met. But given that detailed assessment, you may, as a council, want to consider whether that group is still necessary at that point in time or just how as staff we can help move that recommendation forward directly. The only other thing, Mayor, that I wanted to just add before I yield back to you is, I've certainly heard and read, you know, some of the concerns that have been expressed about why planning for this didn't start earlier, and I do think it's important to address that. Those conversations really started several years ago, dating back in my time to at least 2017 with the Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee that Councilmember Perkins was very heavily involved with, really intensified with the acquisition of Municipal Commons in 2024. But when you're involving an issue of this complexity and this number of stakeholders, you really want to make sure that you have alignment, that progress can be gradual. So the conversation that came on the 8th was not just a, oh darn, we forgot to think about this. It was, we're at the end of the road on this and need to start solidifying some consensus. So we've really worked as staff to honor those diverse perspectives, but now find ourselves where we are pressing for that final answer, not starting a new conversation with you. So whichever direction you guys want to go, whether that's that work group or beginning to implement some of the recommendations that came forward from the court administrator, Ms. Tan, we're happy to do that. But I appreciate the opportunity to frame that, Mayor, and we'll yield back to you.
Thank you. No, I just thought it was important to have this discussion with regards to when I heard that this building may be vanquished soon, that made me very concerned about what do we do and how do we all get together and make sure that, one of the most important issues is, we as a city council can meet somewhere, but municipal court has to be a function that's looked at. And I'll have some more comments about that. But, you know, Judge Helms, if you can, you know, share with the council what your needs are and what you found out and kind of where you're at, that would be extremely helpful.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Four weeks ago, we were informed that the city of Independence wanted us to vacate this by the end of the year, so that gives us like three more months. That's not a whole lot of time. So we formed our own committee, assisting with Judge Watkins, myself, our two prosecutors, Ellen and Mitch, Natalie Tan, and esteemed attorney Marty Kerr here. And we looked at various sites and looked at the issues and the problems. The building across the street, at first, we said that was not feasible because there was no room for staff. But when we were given a tour by Michelle Sumstead at the IUC building on the first floor, she said, well, Records is going to move out of the first floor of the Police Department over to the IUC building and take that over. So that changed the whole thing because we needed space for the court clerks. They have two cashier windows with bulletproof glass. They have a room over there that we could utilize as a courtroom. And the problem of the occupancy, but we can't move over there till Records unit moves out. So we'd have room for our staff. So once they move out, then we could move in over there, and I don't know when that's going to happen. Now, if they never move out, we could possibly, we looked at the IUC building, and they have a big courtroom there, and the first floor is going to be vacated because the utility people are going over to the old Gihaw building. And we could utilize that. But Officer Sumstead informed us that if this bond thing ever passes to go ahead and build a new municipal court and council chambers, they would destroy the building that we, the courtroom that we'd be in there until the new one was completed. So if we could do across the street, if it's temporarily, but I don't know what Plan B is if that bond never passes, you know. But we had to take into consideration the minimum operating standards. Minimum operating standard number seven says, municipal division shall be operated in a manner that upholds the constitutional principles of separation of powers and the integrity of the judiciary as a separate and independent branch of government. The municipal division must have exterior and interior signage, design, functionality, and other factors conveying an appearance to the public that is separate and independent branch of government. Minimum operating standard number eight says, proceedings in a municipal division are open to the public of all ages unless a municipal division orders otherwise in a particular circumstance for good cause shown. The courtroom facility must be sufficient for the purpose of a courtroom and is large enough to reasonably accommodate the public, parties, and attorneys. The facility chosen for court takes into consideration the safety and comfort of the party, the public, the lawyers, and the facilities chosen uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary as a separate branch of government. The municipal division allows members of the public and news media access to open municipal records in accordance with the court operating rules. That is kind of a little bit on the small side, but we believe it can work. Right now, it has metal folding chairs. We'd like to have those, like, if we do utilize that space, have those clamped together so people can't pick up a chair and throw it like a Jerry Springer show on Domestic Violence Court Day. And eventually, when you tear this building down, we'd like to have these benches installed there because they're much more comfortable, and they'd be fixed to the floor. We also have safety concerns for the public and their staff need to be addressed. We'd like to say have a dais to separate the judge and court staff from other individuals in the courtroom. You know, this was a perfect courtroom here. I wish you could replicate this, but I know that's not possible. We need to have a safe room. We'd like to move the cameras and monitors and the PA system from the current courtroom to the new courtroom. And we'd like to have carpeting like this installed because it's tile, and the walls are hard, that it would help lessen the sound, and that'd be better. But we definitely need a bench separating us from the people because especially in the last seven years, people, all this rhetoric against judges and police officers, FBI, Department of Justice, people are acting up more in court than they ever have in my 33 years of being a judge. They just don't respect the legal system like they used to. The public restrooms, we'll have to have public restrooms on the first floor of the Police Department. And we understand that the second and third floor is going to be vacated. The city staff could use restrooms on the second floor, that it's accessible by the elevator or stairs, but yet we should have to have a pass to be able to get there. The prosecutor office must also be separated from the court. We would anticipate the prosecutor's office would be on the second floor with the security that you can't go up the elevators or stairs without a pass. Then the Independence Youth Court would need space for offices and training and storage as they cannot share space with the municipal court. There's plenty of space there for the Independence Youth Court to have offices on the second floor, and they can use a police conference and adjacent safe room for hearings. Youth Court must maintain a separate locked file room for all juvenile records. Now, and we could store all our records over there also. We also have taken into consideration parking. When the library gets this property eventually, will we be able to use the parking lot out front here? That's something that we need to take into consideration because there's got to be plenty of parking. We had a domestic violence court this morning, or this afternoon, and mental health court this morning, and there's about 80 to 90 people in here for the domestic violence docket, and there has to be plenty of parking for court. So that has to be taken into consideration. We also need a judge's chamber so we can have private conferences. Sometimes when we have young kids testify, especially in domestic violence, there's with two parents there, we don't want the child to testify in front of the kids. We take them in the chambers with a defense lawyer, prosecutor. So we have to have a judge's chamber that's suitable to have private conversations. Also, Hope House needs a safe space to meet with victims. Currently, they use Conference Room D here on the first floor. And so we have to have something available for them. They're very important in combating domestic violence. So if we make those modifications, we can use that building.
Okay, very good.
Any questions?
Yep, any questions? Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, what are next steps?
I think it would be productive if the municipal court staff would sit down with the city manager's office. We could probably answer most of these questions in about 30 minutes.
And do we have, you know, obviously, moving benches and all of those sorts of things? There's going to have to be budget to do that. And do we have funds that we can put at the disposal to make the transition? Obviously, you're going to have to move, you need a moving van just to get those records out of there and to the IUC.
Yeah, I'm confident that the relocation that we're talking about is very minimal budget and something that can be done efficiently and quickly.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Just for the, just a record, the MidAmerica, MidAmerica, goodness, the Midcontinent Public Library discussion just recently started. This wasn't anything that was in the plans by any stretch. This wasn't the Plan B. This was just a natural flow of the needs that they were, are experiencing on 24 Highway with this discussion. So that's what has helped brought this in, which, you know, help brings in when development and things are happening, then that spurs conversations in development. That's just kind of how it works. So this was not anything that was intentional. And certainly, I never saw this conversation taking place with the libraries, which is good. With the study session that we had last week, or a couple of weeks ago in Conference Room D, I know the city manager discussed November 26, 28 as being the last time that city functions was going to be here. But we are still going to be meeting here. There has never been a set dead date when demolition is going to take place, correct? So there is some latitude here.
Yeah, the spirit of my comments were that's the targeted date of when city staff would be able to fully occupy Municipal Commons. You're right, Councilmember, that doesn't mean that, you know, December 1st, a bulldozer is showing up and knocking this building down. To the contrary, there is a well-defined plan in which we are on target to have the Utility Center building renovated by February of 2026, which would then allow us to start that movement. But as we've heard, we need that group relocated before we're then able to take possession for the proposed municipal court use. So there's still several months to go before all of this would happen, and we're not in any immediate position of where this building is going to be targeted for demolition.
So that's helpful. So, and I don't want to put Councilwoman Wiley on the spot, but you kicked around several weeks ago as well about doing a committee. I don't know if a committee is necessarily needed for this, but most certainly, judged with your team and the city manager team working together to find this resolved, I had just a brief conversation this morning. I think the funding can be there. I think there may even be some reuse of this if this is taken down properly, as I'm just thinking out loud. So I think there's some good use and... So, I think there's some good use and possibilities there. And also, this may just help stir and spur the conversation for future development because the problems that we are going to have are not going away. So, we need to really kinda look at how we can work with this in the future.
I would agree.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else, further questions? Anything else for you, Judge?
Well, if it's, if we could stay here for a few more months, maybe we can get the bond passed, passed, and so they could build the new court where they planned on doing it, at the IUC location.
Judge, I would love to have that conversation with you online on what your participation might be within the circle and sphere of influence that you have within this community and all the lawyers that are here to get that done.
Okay, so, so we don't have to move out by the end of the year? We can stay here for a few months because you all need this as council space also?
Correct. You were, we're not on that November timeline, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, just up, the two floors upstairs are gonna be vacated by then.
Mr. City Manager, is that kinda what we're looking at?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Perfect, thank you very much. And I would like to, Judge Watkins, if I could defer to you, if you have any questions or comments with regards to youth court, because you've got special needs, and I know that's a little bit different, if you don't mind coming forward to, to talk about that.
We did kind of incorporate that in some of that, that we would have to have a separate floor from the adult records, separate spaces for staff and record-keeping. The courtroom, again, is gonna be much smaller, probably a third, at least, half the size of this courtroom. So, that can be a concern. Like, last Thursday night, I had about 130 people here, but we do stagger those dockets. I mean, as we do with the adult court as well. So, I wouldn't be able to have people up on the second floor because we would need to lock off those elevators so that nobody else could go up, which means my staff would need to come down if somebody came. So, we'd need some additional accommodations for court, like some movable tables for check-in and checkout that would be outside of the courtroom, which we would use for the waiting area for the juveniles and their families. And then, we'd have to use the conference room behind to use as actually a courtroom because they're individually held. So, we'd need a drop box somewhere on that floor for people. We have that outside of our door by the elevator right now, if you've seen when you go upstairs, because they frequently come in and drop things off for the court. So, but those are all things that we could work with, and we just were at that initial hearing or whatever, city council meeting, there was a statement made about this building being torn down January 1st, and that's the first we were made aware that we weren't gonna be here until the new building, if it ever happened. So, that's why we were concerned. Do you have questions of me?
Anyone else, further questions? Anyone else further questions? No, and, and that's what prompted my response to this when, when that, when, you know, I, we got the email. I wanted to address those concerns because, you know, if this building's gonna stay put and we're available to use it, then that's great. I was under your understanding too, that it stated in that meeting that this, in fact, would be up for bulldozing pretty quickly, and, and that would put a lot of things into place. We've gotta have the time to be able to do this and to make sure that your needs are met, and that we have a municipal court that's safe for you as judges, safe for the attorneys, safe for the, the victims, the victim advocates, and all of the folks who are involved in this. And that's just an extremely important thing, and I think this is an important discussion, and we'll continue to work to get this worked out, and, and hopefully, we can do this in 30 minutes, but my suspicion is it'll take a lot more time than that to do that. So, anyone else, other?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
As I'm thinking out loud, well, Mr. City Manager, you will not be here, so if you don't mind, I'll just kinda direct over here to the, the future interim city manager. As these conversations persist and move forward, can you give us an, an update on how the conversations are going and the, just keeping us in the loop of the conversations and timeframes with this?
I'll, I'll ask the deputy city manager to, to make her way forward. I know you probably aren't looking for a robust answer.
Sure.
But, but one, while she's making her way up, one thing I would just want, again, to share, and I know I'm talking at you, but also for the community's benefit, we're having routine, regular meetings with our owner's representative on all of these facilities, with the construction managers on these projects. If there are any parties here tonight from city staff, from municipal court that would like to be party to those conversations, plenty of other city departments are attending those and represented at those, so we would welcome their participation as well.
Before you move forward, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
When you say all parties, are all parties, are all parties invited and not attending?
I'm gonna defer to the deputy because she's the project manager from the city perspective.
To clarify, no, everyone that has been invited to the meeting so far has been attending. We've done some fairly regular construction updates and study sessions, and that will continue. Most of the work so far that we've had to update this body on has been related to the police station and fire stations and that progress, and the comments, of course. As we transition into exiting this building and next steps in the IUC renovations and all of that, those updates will then be part of those routine weekly updates to the council and then also study sessions when there's enough to share to actually have a, a substantial update. But yes, those, that communication is anticipated to still continue. And the meeting that the city manager's referencing is just, we have a bi-weekly meeting with our owners rep, project advocates, to discuss where we are, any major roadblocks, any major delays in projects and things like that. And as delays come up, which happily, not many have been occurring recently, so I hate the fact that I said that out loud, I'm sure it will bite me later, but there hasn't been much from a delay perspective to bring forward, so still tracking on schedule. In fact, you will very recently be seeing the first packet for Fire Station 8 come before you for some decisions. So, yes, keep the council apprised of all major milestone dates.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Okay. Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up with this discussion?
No, sir, thank you.
With that being said, we have citizen comments. Lucy Young is asked to speak both on the Wallys. You have three minutes for Wallys, and you have five minutes for municipal court. And if you could please let me know when you're switching gears so we can keep the time.
I'm not gonna speak on the Wallys tonight.
Okay.
Do you consider, do you realize the implications of moving the municipal court into the IPD building? During the GeoBond presentations, we were told that the building was riddled with problems and needed to be torn down, but now it's fine to put the court in for a temporary time period with no end date in sight. The council offered a solution at your September 8th, 20, excuse me, your September 8th, 2025 public meeting, and that was that we needed to put the Justice Center back on for GeoBond. You reiterated that tonight. And call me Captain Obvious, but has no one seen the recall election for Frank White? People in this county are mad about their property taxes increases, and that includes independent residents. Do you honestly think by moving the court into the IPD building, you are saying that you can't afford to build the Justice Center? That was the justification for pushing the Justice Center, that the IPD building needed to come down because it was fraught with problems, but now it's okay? What kind of message are you sending to the voters that you're asking to increase their property taxes? Isn't that telling the, the citizens that the building is essentially functional? The day that the GeoBond Committee did the tour with me, both elevators were out. So, you better think about the additional costs of making sure the elevators are running. At your July 28th, 2025 roundtable, a council member mentioned that the voters had IPD fatigue, and the council decided not to put the Justice Center on the April 2026 ballot, and that was about as close as any discussion has been on this topic. At the September 8th, 2025 city council public meeting, where the municipal court and city council, excuse me, I'm so mad I can't talk, where, where it was discussed where the city council would have their meetings held, that someone committed, said that they wanted a committee formed. And I'm gonna remind you, you are a committee. This body needs to provide decisions where the council and the court meetings will be held. There is no reason to rush into it, as was discussed here tonight for the first time. At the last meeting that was unfortunately not recorded, it was suggested that this building would come down in January, or that meant the bid process would start. It didn't mean there'd be a bulldozer on the front lawn. There is no reason to move out of this building, down to Jackson County Legislature, down to the ISD School Board, over to the Sermon Center. The meetings need to be held here, the court needs to be held here, until you, as a committee, can come up with a plausible plan that may or may not include the GeoBond. Because I'll tell you now, if you move them to the IPD building, you can kiss the GeoBond and any hopes of it ever passing again in this city. With no decision where the council will meet or the municipal court will be held literally two months before City Hall is to be vacated, it's gross incompetence by the city, and that reflects directly on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Becky Hake. You've got five minutes for Wallys and five minutes for municipal court.
I'm gonna be very quick tonight. Wallys, as far as it goes, I know it's very popular with our residents. Anyone that has watched over social media, there's very few people that are against it. They're all for it. They think it'll be great. As far as, we keep hearing the traffic and further down Nolan Road to the north, I don't know, has anybody drove down there? There's a lot of vacant storefronts, there's, none of them have, none of the businesses or restaurants have lines coming out their door because they're overcrowded, or they're complaining they have to close because they're overcrowded. Business would be welcome all the way up to 24 Highway. Now, granted, we know everybody's not gonna drive that far, you know, but if you get them to go three or four blocks each way, you're gonna help out a lot of businesses. And if, and if you can work with Wallys and you can put up, well, you can definitely put up your street signs marking directions to the Truman Library, Truman Home, all that stuff, you might get some people that would actually go, we got time to kill, let's go check it out. We talk a lot about tourism, and I tell you, that's gonna be a lot of extra people just driving off of I-70 that may never have stopped off to I-70. So, anyway, that's my thoughts on Wallys. Okay, now, as far as the building here and what to do at these meetings. So, as I understand, the Gihaw Village was purchased and decided, it was decided in a closed session of city council. They decided the plans on the building, and they voted to keep the city council meetings on the square, somewhere, and to have limited city businesses on the square, and they also voted to allow residents to pay IPL bills at the old IPL building. We had GeoBond Committee formed to work on these plans. We had Charter Committee formed to make changes in the committee. As we all know, the GeoBonds, all but one, did not pass. A lot of these changes didn't, you know, didn't pass. And here we are several months later, and I, like several other people in this room in that meeting last time, heard that in January, they were planning to start destroying this building with no plan. I mean, it's been several months. I would've thought this discussion would've started way before then. The courts have to have a place. Good grief, we need you guys. And city council needs a place to meet, and we've never discussed what limited services would be available. Can people still pay their electric bill somewhere up here, or do they have to drive clear out there? There's been no discussion on electric bills being paid at the old IPL building either for people that are, it's more convenient. So, I think these are all good questions, but the problem is, we've waited till the last two months to address them. We know the plan to move out of City Hall. Now, are we, are we not planning to start the demolishing in January? You know, what do they, where's it been the last six months? What, what has this been going on? Why in the beginning did we not think of a Plan B? Okay, you have the committees, all this going on, talking about the GeoBonds, did nobody think that maybe they wouldn't pass? What are you gonna do if they don't pass? And it appears that's never been thought of. Really, we expect better out of our city, we expect better out of our city council, and quite frankly, we deserve better. And we all keep saying, all this is temporary. This will be temporary, this will be temporary. What is the meaning of temporary today? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Sorenson. You have five minutes to talk about municipal court.
I'm sorry. Bob?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules to allow outside residents to speak.
Thank you.
Excuse me to speak.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
We've got a second.
We've got a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none. Madam State Clerk, please call the roll to suspend the rules to allow someone from outside the city to speak. So, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for bringing that to our attention.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaught?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the motion carries six in favors, you're opposed. Mr. Sorenson, you have five minutes to talk about municipal court.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, for doing that. I don't, I was being teased about trying to write a speech right prior to the council meeting start tonight, so I'm not gonna read what I wrote. I've listened to the speakers that spoke before, I mean, the judge and other, the other two speakers that spoke, and I think, I tried to make the meeting that I didn't know about that was a week ago in the other room over here that wasn't recorded or televised, and I made it for the last half of the meeting and got to listen to comments made by the council and stuff in regards to the municipal court. I started on the police department 1973, '74, the police station was open when I got out of the academy. There was a little building here in this parking lot where we had court before this building was built. The court needs, so I definitely believe court needs to be separated from the police department. I have a great concern about moving, I feel, moving the court into the police building when the police building's supposed to be so bad shape, which I don't believe is true. I think it's fixable. But I think this room is perfect. This room was, been perfect for court and council meetings since it opened, 1975 or whenever it was. It's a perfect setting. We don't need to stop having it here until it comes to the time when the building maybe has to come down. I hear at the meeting that I attended the last half, well, we wanna worry about the expense. Why are we keeping the expense of keeping this building open? I'll remind you that I come to all the council meetings, I know when the Gihaw Building was purchased. I know how many months the building has sat empty. Over 20 since the purchase. I know what the payments are for a $20 million loan, I mean, $20 million loan. That's a lot of money for an empty building. I heard about, when we purchased it, it all it needed was a new roof. That was it. We move in in June. June came, well, no, we can't get there until December. December came, it'll be next June. June came, now we're saying November. I know what the payments are on that loan. Math has always been a good subject. I don't think keeping this room and the court and the city council meetings here until you find a solution, an acceptable solution, has a room big enough. I, Mr. Helm, I've came to his court many times as a police officer. I know how full this room can get. It can't fit over there. It can't fit. It's not safe, it's not right. It needs to stay here. The council needs to have this size of a room to have council meetings. I heard somebody talk about, well, we might be able to find a room at the new building for council. Well, I've toured the building. building. I got to go on a tour, tour of it before it was purchased. Not sure where that room exists, that you're gonna be able to handle the amount of citizens you can handle here, which you owe to the citizens, whether they're residents or non-residents about an issue here. You owe it to them, to give them a place big enough to be able to be heard when they want to speak at a council meeting. I think you need to think about this. I think you need to not overreact too quickly, and keep this available as long as you can, until you have a proper solution. I thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Johansson.
Hello, it's Mike Johansson. I've been up here, spoke to you all before here in the past. I didn't write a speech either tonight or a talk. I just, it's just gonna be off the top of my head. I just got several concerns. First of all, the Police Department, I don't know, is the rec, is the police records unit gonna be staying in the building? 'Cause I know that the utilities building can't hold everybody. It's not as big as the current police station. Does anybody have that answer? The police records unit, is it gonna be staying where it is, or?
Well, well, we, we don't do question and answers right here, but we'll, we'll address that.
Okay, here's my concern. I've got many concerns. First of all, like, like Mr. Helm said, you can't mix the two, because if you do, somewhere down the line, someone's gonna file a lawsuit, and all these cases that the judges hear, they could get thrown out. They could become, you know, you know, have, have a lawsuit filed, and because you had mixed the two, all those verdicts are null and void, which can cost somebody their life, because Ms. Watkins and Mr. Helm, they, they hear all the domestic violence cases. I used to work domestic violence in my career, and I worked many homicides in domestic violence, where a woman was brutally murdered, and, and if a person gets convicted of, of domestic violence, they don't have a right to own a gun anymore. Well, if all those verdicts are thrown out, somebody could go get a gun, and somebody's gonna end up dead, because we're gonna rush into something. And I don't think that's fair to the citizens. I don't think it's fair to the women. It's not even fair to the men, because, you know, you could get all, see, all these DUI cases thrown out. You could get weapon charges thrown out. This council should not rush, rush into this whatsoever. We need to find a proper place and make sure this is done right. Or, or somebody's death is gonna be on your shoulders, to be quite honest with you. 'Cause if they get thrown out, something, something bad could happen. That's my first and biggest concern, 'cause, like, like I said, that Police Department's not totally going away. That jail's gonna have to be there. There's no new jail, the firing range is gonna have to be there. I got a feeling some other units are still gonna be there. So, that's my biggest, biggest concern right now, is that somebody don't die because we rush into something. My second, second thing, I just wanna echo a few comments that Lucy made, that Mr. Sorenson made. Just three years ago, I was still in the reserve unit. I was in that police station, and you're trying to tell me that that building was totally worthless. That's not true. That is just not true. And now, you're moving the court over there, 'cause it's not that bad. You know, and you're wanting to pass, you're wanting to pass a, a justice bond issue. You need to be transparent with the public, 'cause I don't believe you are, to be quite honest with you. One, one more thing I just wanna echo tonight, you know, what, all this started, 'cause we bought the Gihah Building. We implemented a plan. We started getting everything rolling based on the Justice Center tax was gonna pass. Well, guess what? It didn't. And now, we have no Plan B, and, and we, you know, like I said, the Police Department's gonna have to stay open, far as the jail's concerned, far as the, the range is concerned. Officers have to be certified at least twice a year on their, on their weapons. So, that's gotta stay open. And I know some of you weren't on the council when we bought that Gihah Building. To me, it was a mistake. You should've waited to see if the bond issues passed before you start a plan in action. We started a plan in action. It didn't pass, and now, here we are.
You have one minute, sir.
We have to try to move court in just a few months, and that's not fair to these judges. It's not fair to the citizens. It's not fair to everybody that comes to municipal court. I used to work security for, for the court, and you're gonna condense this in half? You're asking for trouble. 'Cause let me tell you what, you have all your domestic violence victims on one side, all your alleged perpetrators on another, and you're condensing them? I used to have to walk many a people out to the car, so we wouldn't have a fight, where somebody wouldn't get hurt. And now, we're trying to condense them into that small little space over there. I'm telling you, you're asking for trouble. You're asking this officer here, I know Mr. Hozak works court security, you're asking him to try to control, control everything, and he's gonna be busy with something else, and then these people are gonna be right up on top of one another. And that's what's not being thought out. I mean, I mean, like I said, I worked security. It can get dangerous up here. Like, like the judge said, people have no respect for the law now. They don't have any respect for, for, for the judge even. Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. That's all the citizens' comments. Anyone else wanted to follow up with anything? And, Mr. City Manager, you wanna follow up with anything?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.